I will call to order this regular meeting of the Board of Education, which was duly noticed on December 6, 2024 through posting a notification with the press in accordance with its Wisconsin statute nineteen point eighty-four. Let's start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Commissioner Millard, what do you have?
Well, I'm feeling quite well tonight. I've lost my cold, so I'm doing well. Oh, it's my pleasure to introduce Mr. Matt Perrinboon, the principal of Washington Elementary. Mr. Perrinboon has been with the Janesville School District for almost twenty-four years. Prior to being Washington's principal, he served as the assistant principal at Edison Middle School for six years and served as a teacher and dean of students at Franklin Middle School for twelve years. In two thousand twenty-three, he was honored with the Administrator of the Year by the School District of Janesville. At Washington, he strives to provide a safe, learning environment that engages students while challenging them to achieve at high levels. Matt's teaching degree is from Edgewood College, and his master's in school administration is from Cardinal Stretch. Mr. Perrinboon, who do you have with you this evening?
Good evening, and thank you. I'm sorry. It's my pleasure to introduce two outstanding students from Washington School. Vivian Stapelman and Palmer Gutsman are both fourth-grade students. They certainly demonstrate many strengths in their academics, but I'd also say in personal character as well. I asked their teachers to share a few comments with me about what makes them stand out at Students at Washington, and this is what they said. Palmer is a dedicated student who consistently gives her best effort. She is not only focused on her work, but also takes time to assist her classmates when they need help. Palmer is always willing to help her teacher with classroom tasks, such as passing out papers or completing classroom tasks. Her positive attitude and willingness to help others create a supportive environment for everyone around her. Palmer is a role model in the classroom and a good friend to her peers. And Vivian's teacher says Vivian demonstrates a strong work ethic and is always working to do her best. She consistently displays outstanding citizenship skills of being safe, respectful, and responsible. Vivian is always up for a challenge and goes above and beyond in the classroom. She not only prioritizes her learning, but also prioritizes her classmates' learning by her willingness to help others when needed. She is a leader amongst her peers and is well-liked and respected by her classmates. Thank you, girls, and keep up the good work.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Sure, let's try. We're going to vote electronically? That passes unanimously, eight to zero. Commissioner Paul is absent right now. Next, safety message.
Thank you. So I thought I would talk about preparing for outdoor activities, assuming that we're going to have a winter. So if you're planning on venturing outdoors in the winter months for activities or, you know, to clear snow or whatever, there's some things that you should do to prevent serious injuries and illnesses, such as hypothermia and frostbite. You should wear layers of light and warm clothing, a wind-resistant coat, waterproof shoes, and a hat, gloves, and scarf. You should work slowly when engaged in outdoor tasks, including shoveling your driveway or removing snow from your car. And you should always, if you're going out for an activity such as snowshoeing or skiing, take a friend and carry a charged cell phone when you participate in those things. If you're out shoveling your snow, do not shovel after eating or while smoking. Take it slow, stretch out beforehand, shovel only fresh powdery snow. It is much lighter and easier. You should push it rather than lift it, and if you do lift it, use a small shovel or only partially fill the shovel. You should lift with your legs as always, not your back. Do not work to the point of exhaustion, and you should also be aware of the signs of a heart attack and stop immediately on call nine-one-one if you are experiencing any of those symptoms. Don't pick up that shovel without a doctor's permission if you have a history of heart disease. A clear driveway is not worth your life.
Thanks, Kathy. Greg, you want to add something to the safety message today?
I will later.
Later? Okay. Three point four, recognize our fall athletes.
My name is Ben McCormick. I'm Athletic Activities Director at Craig High School. Thanks for inviting us here tonight to recognize our student athletes who participated in the WIA State Tournament this past season. Before I introduce our coaches and our athletes, just a couple highlights from this fall. We had several athletes in all of our sports earn all-conference honors, including Big Eight Kicker of the Year, Baylon Woodman. Our participation numbers in the fall have continued to increase coming out of COVID. This year, we're up four percent as compared to last year, with a total of three hundred forty-nine athletes participating in fall sports. And the winter season has started as well. We've seen an increase in numbers there. The biggest jump is due in large part to our wrestling numbers. We're up fifty-four percent at Craig, which is a huge jump, large part due to our female wrestlers. We had six wrestlers last year. We have eighteen this year. It's a two-hundred-percent increase in female wrestlers. If you saw the article in the paper, Parker has thirteen female wrestlers, give a total of thirty-one in our district, which is, I have to believe, top in the state. So that's outstanding. Again, I want to thank our school board for having us tonight and continuing the opportunity to compete in educational-based athletics and honor these exceptional Janesville student athletes. So with that, I'd like to introduce our girls tennis coach, Pete Stuckey.
Good evening. How are you guys doing? Thanks for having us here. It has been, this is my first time getting a chance to honor one of our athletes. This is not Raya's first time, but it's my first time here with her. This is her fourth time having gone to state as a tennis player and twice as a gymnast, hopefully three times this time. She is obviously a very dedicated and skilled player, but to me, the biggest part is what happens every day at practice. She does everything that you'd want from a player. She was a consummate captain, leading by example every single day, taking every drill in and working her hardest every day. And it pays off not only for herself, but I think it paid off greatly for the team. She's exactly what you want for an athlete on your team. Thanks, Raya.
Thank you.
Next up is the girls golf coach, Stephanie Hansen.
Okay, they're on their way. First of all, I'm Stephanie Hansen. I'm one of the coaches. Mark Thompson is with me as well. He's the other Craig coach. I'd like to thank you guys for your continued support for Craig and Parker athletes. I think it means a lot to the coaches, the athletes, and the parents, so thank you so much for that. We had a really successful year. Our girls team made it to state for the first time in a non-COVID year, which I think is exceptionally impressive. We ended six and two in conference, the only two teams that beat us. Middleton, which I think they ended top three at state, and Verona, who coaches the golf pro at University Ridge, so I think that's a little unfair. So we, from last year to this year, we had one senior graduate, but we ended up shaving off over, on average, over twenty strokes off of our team average. So very hard-working group, so I'm just going to go through and name them all and congratulate them on their state appearance. So we have Bryn Sickage. We have Kate Wicksum. Josie Thompson. And Alexis Hansen. And then we had two other athletes that were on our state team that were unable to make it. Macy Murphy, who is playing hockey right now and wants to encourage you to vote positively for the girls hockey team. And then we also have Rowan Dunn, who was unable to attend due to work, so thank you guys so much. And then I'm introducing Jessica Lawton, our head girls cross-country coach.
We are really fortunate to be able to, again, be recognized by the school board and have this opportunity to kind of highlight, again, the things that our teams have done this year. So I'm extremely proud of both this boys' and girls' teams. We've carried on a tradition of excellence, which is part of our motto and things that we try to encourage both of our teams to do. This is the twenty-fourth appearance for the girls at the state meet. This is the twenty-third appearance for the boys at the WIA State Meet for our program. Both of these teams won their sectionals this year, which is, we think, the first time in our program history that both the boys' team and the girls' team won. And it makes it even more special that they were at the same course on the same day, and it was just a really fantastic experience for us. So we're going to go ahead and introduce these fantastic kids. And not only, again, are they, just like the other coaches as well, good students, good athletes, and good people. So we're going to go ahead and start, and I'll introduce Nick Mullen. I'm sorry, I'm going to go in this order. Yep, sorry, this is Nick. He's part of our state team. Jacob Zass is also part of our state team. Andrew is not able to be here with us tonight. Robert Zassis, who's one of our letter winners as well and state athletes. He's also academic all-state and academic all-state team. Sorry, I actually have one. Rhett Thompson. Academic all-state team, academic all-state individual as well. Owen Hotchkiss, academic all-state team. Cameron Nocenti, academic all-state team. Tyler Hegley, academic all-state team, academic all-state individual. This is his second time at the state meet as well and one of our captains. And Roman Cock, as well, is our academic all-state team, academic all-state individual and one of our captains as well. We have our girls to celebrate as well. So we have Lucia Coleman. She's at a basketball game tonight. She couldn't make it. Also academic all-state team and individual. Molly Cunningham is unable to make it, academic all-state team and individual. Caitlin O'Leary as well, academic all-state team and individual. And now we have Zoe Zagler, academic all-state team and individual. Juliana Moran is complete, she was also all-conference, academic all-conference, academic all-state team and academic all-state individual as well as state person, so congratulations. Addison Fagan is academic all-state team individual. She's also completing her third, this is her third trip to state. She's also been academic all-conference and academic all, and all-conference individual throughout her career at Craig. And Abby Anderson is also finishing up her career with her three-time state qualifier, all-conference, academic all-conference in her career, academic all-state, and captain and academic all-state team. And we definitely want to talk about the fact that our boys' team had their team GPA as three-point-eight-eight, and the girls' academic team was three-point-eight-nine, so I had to make sure that we talked about that as well.
Clayton Krieger from Janesville Parker Athletics and Activities Director. We're actually going to flip the script a little bit here. Our first athlete is a multiple-sport athlete, and she's a POMS athlete that needs to get to a basketball game, so I am going to invite Coach Zimmerman and Coach Sterns up here to speak.
Well, thank you for having us tonight. I'm Coach Zimmerman. Coach Sterns is here. Grace is right there. I don't have a joke tonight, Mark. I'm sorry, but I'll keep it centered on Grace tonight. You know, I guess I'm getting old because I've been around, Ron Kramer and I started the girls' golf program thirty-one years ago together, so I've seen a lot of athletes come through our program. And the jump that Grace made from a freshman to a senior, I've only seen in very few athletes that have come and played for us at Parker to do that. She started out as a freshman with a sixty-three average for nine holes, and she finished her senior year with a forty-six average, a seventeen-shot improvement over four years. The thing that I would say most about Grace is she epitomizes as a student athlete as she played varsity for two years, and both years she was academic all-state. Her senior year, to go off of the academics and move on, she became all-conference. She was co-MVP of the team. Obviously, she qualified for the WIA State Tournament. The second day of the state tournament, we were sitting there warming up down at University Ridge, and the real feel, Coach, was twenty-nine degrees as she was warming up on that second day of the state tournament. I looked at him, and I said, "Coach, I'm glad I don't have to play today." And she's sitting here warming up, trying to do that. Lo and behold, she goes out in those conditions and shoots her best round of her career on the last day of the state tournament under that pressure to finish in the top thirty-five out of almost eighty golfers. So if you're looking for somebody that's a student athlete to represent our school district and to represent Janesville Parker, you couldn't have picked a better person than Grace Nylons. She epitomizes hard work and being a student athlete, and that's what we're all about. So thank you for the recognition, and congratulations to Grace.
The next coaches I will introduce you to are Coach Snyder and Coach Jensen, who coach our girls swim team.
This is Coach Snyder. We, the Parker Girls Team. This is Lily Mayfield. Lily, this season, she's a junior at Parker High School, academically amazing as well as an amazing athlete. She has kind of cemented her place in Parker High School history this year, has done it her last two years, but this is the first year she is number one. She has rewrote the record books by taking both the fifty-three and the hundred-backstroke records at Parker High School. These are forty-year-old records that she busted. Just a testament to her talent and determination all the last few years. I do want to note, give Lily a lot of credit, as she began her swimming journey in Janesville Schools at our Learn to Swim program when she was in elementary school, taught by Derek. Enough, small world. And then she joined the Franklin Falcons Girls Swim Team, coached by myself and Derek's mom. So we've known Lily a very long time. She is now the most valuable swimmer on the Parker High School Girls Swim Team as a junior. She's our upcoming captain for next year, and she exemplifies dedication and training year-round. Pretty rare thing in our area, she swims, you're in the pool more than she's not in the pool. She just had a three-week break. She's got to go back and join the pool one more time. Her commitment has earned her spots at Zones and Nationals and club events and throughout the club circuit, enhancing her performance as she returns to compete as a Viking each August. She is a formidable competitor in one of the state's most challenging swimming conferences and sectionals. Lily's name commands respect in the pool. Athletes from Middleton, from Verona, from Madison West know who she is. Over the past two seasons, she has shown incredible resilience, overcoming two elbow surgeries to emerge healthier and stronger. As she approaches her senior year, we cannot be more excited. She is poised to challenge more decades-old records, busting even more and further solidifying her legacy at Parker High School. Good job, Lily.
The next WIAA State Student Athlete Representative is going to be Mia Riley. Mia is a, let's see, she participated in volleyball for four years this last year. She was on the varsity team. Last year, you guys probably remember seeing her. She was on the state track team. She's a four-year varsity track athlete. She's also a three-year varsity girls' basketball athlete, and this year she came up to me and said, "Hey, Krieger, I'm going to try something different. I'm going to go out for wrestling." And she's doing a phenomenal job on the wrestling mat. She had her first win this Saturday, which was super exciting. Mia is just an unbelievable student athlete, an unbelievable student, friend, teammate. She's one of those kids that, when she walks into a room, she just lights up the room with her smile. But she's coming to us with a little bit of a different perspective here. So Mia is the, she will be the first ever Janesville student to get selected to the WIAA Student Athlete Leadership Team this year. And so instead of listening to me, because Cam and Kira do a great job providing you updates about athletics, I think it would be best if Mia kind of talks to you guys about some of the things that she's been working on. So Mia Riley.
So hi, everyone. My name is Mia Riley. I'm currently a senior, and I'm the first WIAA Student Athlete Leadership Team. So I'll be speaking about the process of how I got to be a part of this team, what myself and my SALT group has done so far, more details about our group meetings, and then the importance of it all. So how I got to be a part of this group started with an email that came from Parker's Athletic Office to all the students seeking a possible opportunity, which I did, in fact, obviously take this opportunity up. So first, I had to fill out six long, paragraph responses talking about myself, my strengths, my past leadership roles, and even more. I also had to submit a headshot and then a minute-and-a-half-long video talking about more questions that they asked. After submission, there was rounds, so I made it to the final round. There was the second round and then the final round. The second round was a virtual interview with the WIA committee, and then I was chosen out of two-hundred-eighty-nine applicants from the state to be a part of the twenty-seven Student Athlete Leadership Team representatives. So what we've done so far is we attended the district meetings. Mine was District Five in Mount Horeb a couple months ago, which our Student Athlete Leadership Team members talked about our roles, why we wanted to be a part of this team. And we also had a couple of Zoom meetings with the team and the WIA Board Representatives. We attended state championship games to help with our assigned tasks and getting behind-the-scenes about what the WIA committee does and what goes into all these state championships for the high school. And we just had our first actual in-person meeting in Stevens Point on Sunday, and I'll get into more detail about that now. So in our group meeting, one of the things I wanted to start off with was I wanted to touch on the first-team-building exercise we did in our in-person meeting. So we all took a paper assessment called True Colors. It was a series of words and categories, which we rated ourselves on a number depending how that word applied to us. And we added up the scores, which gave us a total and had a designated color with words written what this color meant. And I thought this was important because these descriptions told us who we are, our strengths, our weaknesses, and this is a good thing to do, I think, as teams in high schools, because then it really recognizes what's this teammate's strength, what's this one's weakness, and then it can all play together as a role, as a team. So that would help teammates, just like it helped my Student Athlete Leadership Group. While meeting with the students across the state, we indicated three key initiatives, which we are focusing on and making happen before June of two thousand twenty-five. They were officiating/sportsmanship, school spirit, and mental health, which has been recognized by myself and other student athlete leaderships around the state. It hasn't just been a concern for Janesville or the Rock County. I'll briefly speak about these categories. So we each had three SMART goals in each of the categories, either to attain before June of two thousand twenty-five or earlier. So for mental health, we want to set up an online or Zoom opportunities for speakers on mental health to interact with member schools. We want promotional clothing, like creating a hashtag about mental health and advertising it, such as, we came up with, "You are not alone," and having this logo, "SALT Team" on it. We want to provide also a landing spot of mental health resources for student athletes. For officiating and sportsmanship, we want to create a WIA sportsmanship recognition with conferences, divisions, and schools, not just only at the state championship level, because in order to get that, you need to make it to the state championship level, and some smaller schools aren't necessarily able to do that. So they need to be recognized just as much as the sportsmanship teams at the state level. We also want to add an area on the WIA website that gears towards high-school-aged officials to promote and retain younger officials. And then we want to use our Student Athlete Leadership Team members to promote and highlight Officials Appreciation Week. For school spirit, we want to announce a new challenge to the eighties in Wisconsin, such as hashtag WIAA How Loud. So it's basically, how loud can you cheer I am able to bring the thoughts and improvements back to my own school and teammates, as well as my ID, to potentially benefit my own school. This has made me able to promote my leadership to other Student-Athletes across the state. Thank you for everyone's time, and I know Coach Krieger and I discussed the opportunity for me to potentially come back to the school board later in the year to share our team's progress and update on my experiences of the WIAA Student-Athlete Leadership Team. Thank you.
Thanks, everybody. Consider approval of the consent agenda.
You jumped too far.
I jumped too far. How about student presenters? You have this all listed here for me, one right after the other.
I tried to.
Okay. From Craig, Presley Morgan.
I just want to start off previewing a little bit of our education. We have our course selections coming up, and for any parents or incoming students or current students, we have videos on our Craig High School website to explain kind of the courses that we have there. So we just talked a lot about our fall sports coming to an end, so our winter sports are starting to start. We have boys' and girls' hockey, basketball, and cheer, oh, and wrestling, and then girls' gymnastics and palms, which have all started. Speaking of gymnastics, we have the Craig Invite this Saturday at Craig High School. And then a couple other things that are starting for our extracurriculars, we have Preview Night for Show Choir on January ninth, and tickets went out for that today. So we hope to see you guys all there soon. And then our DECA Chapter's first competition is a month away, so everyone is studying for that. Speaking of DECA, our chapter did Color a Smile. So that's basically our chapter has coloring pages, which we send to people that are serving in the military, children's hospitals, and nursing homes. We got a total of over two-hundred-and-fifty. I think my best friend and our DECA president and I colored around a hundred ourselves. So it was definitely a fun week to be coloring and then sharing a smile with everyone. Our National Honor Society is doing a supply drive for the Boys and Girls Club coming up, where you're getting a whole bunch of like school supplies, so colored pencils, backpacks, everything like that to go out to them. So December, we always do a Dressember, which brings awareness to human trafficking, which ties to the fashion industry. So if you guys were all wondering, why is this girl wearing a skirt in thirty-degree weather? That is why. Our Craig Cares is being held by our Science National Honor Society, and so we basically get presents for some students at Craig High School. Recently, we've been focusing a lot about the students at our own school. We've had a snack drive for kids in need at Craig through our Blue Ribbon Club, and we just cleaned out our cooler closet, which holds coats and just other clothes that kids there might need. December, also, we're having Dress-Up Days for our student council, so we're having PJ Day, Candy Cane Day, Character Day, and all of those other fun things. Along with that, we just had our eighth-grade tours, so hopefully the kids there know what they want to take their freshman year. To finish off, I'm going to talk a little bit about Sam Loizo. We're having a week for him. He was a big asset to all of our sports for Craig and Parker. So Friday, February seventh, we're hosting our Winter Bash. That's going to be right after the Craig-Parker game on February, oh, sorry, on February seventh, and all proceeds from that will go to JEA in Sammy's name. Along with that, on Thursday, February thirteenth, another Craig/Parker game, we're going to have a raffle for best seat in the house for the game, so they get to sit there, and they get a pizza, and they get to watch the game. And then we also have Miracle Minute at halftime to get donations for JEA, and then we'll be selling the shirts that I designed through MMPR in both Craig and Parker colors for that coming up. Thank you.
And from Parker, Cam Resin.
I'm Cameron. It's great to be with you here all again. Parker High School has been buzzing with activity lately, and I'm so excited to see the incredible energy and hard work coming from both our students and staff recently. As we move through the school year, I'm looking forward to keeping you guys updated of the many things happening at Parker. So to start with, I want to highlight some fantastic work from our AP Statistics students who recently designed and ran their own statistical experiments. Students created their own questions of interest, applied the survey methods they've learned, and tested various hypotheses. Experiments included testing how spinning in circles affects target accuracy, how different music genres impact mathematical performance, and how running speed is influenced by wearing socks versus shoes. This hands-on learning experience really brought their classroom lessons to life and allowed them to analyze real-world data to make inferences about cause and effects. Second, our computer programming competition team also has an awesome experience recently. They competed against fifty other teams at the Milwaukee School of Engineering Program and Competition. This unique event gives students the opportunity to show off their skills in computer science, and our team, Ryan, Kenji, Max, and Russell, finished in a tie for third place. What's even more impressive is that Parker had the most participants of any school at that competition, and students from all over Wisconsin and Northern Illinois were there. And it's so awesome to see how our students are leading the way in their tech. On December ninth, students from the Janesville Research Institute visited the University of Wisconsin Carbon Cancer Center, where they learned about the cutting-edge cancer research from Dr. Joshua Lang's lab. The visit included simulations of real research projects and gave our students a firsthand look at what a career in research would look like. It was truly inspiring. It was a truly inspiring experience they had, and one that has provided these students with a new set of goals to work toward. Our avid tenth graders have also been busy with some amazing community service efforts. They are currently hosting a supply drive for Echo, and they'll be visiting two local elementary schools next week to read with students and help them in classrooms, and it's so wonderful to see them giving back to the community and building connections with those younger students. DECA has been doing a lot of great things as well. They've been preparing for the girls' basketball season by sponsoring a halftime shootout contest at home games with prizes donated by the local businesses. DECA has partnered with these businesses to collect prizes for five home basketball games, and it's so exciting to see our students actively working with the community. They also recently hosted the eighth-grade tours of our Business and Marketing Department, checked out the school store and the credit union, and this just gives the future Vikings a little taste and idea of what they could expect in high school and different classes they're available to take. National Honor Society and teen leadership students are also staying very busy. They've been making holiday cards for residents at local nursing homes and ringing bells for the Salvation Army in the days leading up to our winter break. These students recently led for our eighth-grade tours from various schools as they explored electives and began preparing for their course selection, as I mentioned. These experiences gave our students valuable leadership skills and a chance to make an impact on our younger students. The Parker Closet has been hard at work organizing the Big Give, which will provide holiday gifts to numerous Parker students this week. This initiative ensures that all of our Parker Vikings have gifts open over the holidays and for Christmas, and is just one example of how our school community looks out for one another. As the holiday season approaches, we have some exciting performances to look forward as well. The Parker Choir will be presenting their winter concert on Wednesday, December eighteenth, at seven PM. In addition, NBC WMTV fifteen recorded the Parkers and Craig's Canterum Choirs for their Sounds of the Season TV segment, which will air on the twenty-fourth and twenty-fifth, so watch out for those, and it's a great way to showcase our talented students to the wider community. The Parker Arts Academy has also been doing amazing things. They hosted Professor Anne McAlexander from Central Michigan University for a musical theater and dance masterclass on the fifth, followed by auditions for the CMU Musical Theater undergraduate program. This week, Arts Academy students will take a field trip to see the Milwaukee Ballet's production of The Nutcracker. I also want to take a moment to recognize the success of Parker's musical production of Hadestown Teen Edition. As of recently, with high attendance over both weekends and thirty-four superior ratings from the International Thesbian Festival, it's clear that our students put in an extraordinary amount of work to make the show such a success. So we're also so proud of their achievements. Lastly, our French students have been engaging with younger learners by going to Franklin Middle School to teach lessons about music and film. They also facilitated speaking activities to help students become more comfortable using French, and tomorrow they'll even visit Edison to work with their students there. Congrats to all of our language students for their efforts to foster a love of learning and bridge the gap between our schools. And I just want to thank you guys for your time tonight. It's been a pleasure sharing these exciting updates to you, and I'm so grateful to be part of such a supportive and engaged community. I'm excited to continue to work together, and I'll see you guys in February.
Outstanding. Citizen comments? At this time, I have one. Is there any others, Patrick, or anyone else?
Somebody raised their hand.
Okay. See Patrick for a, fill out a form, please.
Once the meeting is started, we don't accept.
We don't accept anymore?
We're in our fourth class.
Okay. So at this time, we have one presenter. Luke Stewart. Luke, can you introduce yourself and your address, please?
Yep. Luke Stewart, address is forty-one sixteen East Ridge Drive, Janesville. I'm the head coach for the Rock County Fury Girls High School Team. I'm here tonight to ask for your consideration to take over our co-op as the host school for the twenty-five-twenty-six season. I've coached in this program for the last twelve years, with the last eight as head coach. Over many years of our program, we've had to play out of three different ice arenas from Janesville to Beloit and Monroe, just so that we can get ice time to practice and play games. It wasn't a choice for us, but a necessity. To this day, this still continues, as this year we will be playing in Beloit, Janesville, and Monroe. A Beloit School District has always been our host school, and in the past years, we've had more Beloit players or close to even with Janesville. This year, and in previous years, it's started to heavily shift over to a trend of most of the players in the Janesville School District. This year, out of the nine active schools in our co-op, Craig and Parker being two of those, they have combined eight players for this year out of the sixteen on our roster. Beloit Memorial, which is a Beloit School District, has one player who graduates in two thousand twenty-seven with no potential players that will attend Beloit Memorial now or after that. Janesville will only continue to grow the number of players with having twelve next year and thirteen for the twenty-sixth to twenty-seventh season, and will be continued to be the majority of the players in our co-op. To make up the other eight players this year on our roster, it's spread out between the other seven schools. So one and two players on those seven schools just make up the other eight for there. When you look at the shift of where the players come from for our co-op, that alone, to me, makes sense for a change in host schools to Janesville to ensure that our program can continue and continue to grow. But there are more benefits to Janesville being our host co-op starting for the twenty-five to twenty-six season. Janesville would be closing the gap for equality for their female athletes that play hockey. This move alone would allow them to finally have their own locker room at the new two-sheet Janesville Ice Arena, which will be ready September two thousand twenty-five. That means no more taking their equipment back and forth every day, the same opportunity that all three-area boys' teams are afforded and have been for some time. Our girls' team will finally get one place to call home and not have to travel to three different ice arenas throughout the year just to get ice time. We will have the same priorities as the boys' teams for ice, regular practice and game times, and a consistent schedule year after year. Our girls' hockey program deserves the right for the equal opportunities, and to have Janesville be the host school would provide this for our female athletes, not just that attend the Janesville School District, but also for the other female student athletes that are on our team. We have been afforded, we've never been afforded the opportunity like this, and we'd love to be able to take advantage of it to bring our program what these players have fought for every year. Imagine having to walk past the boys' locker rooms year after year and wondering why we never get that, why we have to fight so hard every year for ice time and recognition. This is an amazing opportunity to bring that to a close and to provide your student athletes with these benefits and to help to continue to grow our program in girls' hockey in the area. Janesville Youth Hockey alone this year has sixty-seven registered youth hockey players with a forecast of a hundred next year. So thank the board for your consideration and for your time and for all the support in this. Thank you.
Thanks, Coach.
Did you jump anything after both meetings started?
Is that policy?
Yes.
Okay. So moving on, four-point-one, consider approval of the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. We're going to vote digitally. Thank you. Let's vote. Got it?
No, it's not.
Mine came up.
I tried to get it. You had it glitched.
There it is.
Are you in for Susan and Callan?
I, I, I voted to.
And did you vote yea?
Yes.
Then it has marked unanimously.
Thank you. That passes unanimously eight-zero. Commissioner Paul is absent.
And Commissioner McInnes has left.
Oh, thank you. So that passes unanimously seven-to-zero.
Yes.
Thank you. My dad was a math teacher, by the way.
Moving on to five-point-one, presentation discussion and consider approval of the School
District of Janesville's application to sponsor the WIAA Girls Hockey Co-op Team. So we've gotten a lot of information. I'm sure you've read all the information, scores of emails. We've got feedback from administration, as little extra documents from myself, so we've had lots of information. So I'm going to go ahead and make a motion. I'd like to make a motion to have the School District of Janesville apply to become the sponsoring agent for the Girls Co-op Hockey Team, currently known as the Rock County Fury, beginning with the twenty-five-twenty-six school year.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a, there's so moved and a second?
Give me a second to catch up with this.
Sure.
I didn't get a.
So who's, you know, Susan?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Thank you for your patience.
Oh, thank you. So is a motion, a second, discussion, comments, questions? Seeing none, let's vote.
Yeah.
I voted Denise, and it said it was an air.
It's glitching on me a little bit, so I just reopened it.
Okay. Will it populate again?
Oh, here it is.
Okay. Thank you.
Let's vote.
Okay, and that is. Yay.
And that passes unanimously seven-to-zero. Commissioner Hayworth and Commissioner Paul are absent. Five-point-two, presentation on the state report cards.
Okay. I think all of you have the packet available. Hopefully, you had a chance to kind of take a look at that. My goal tonight is to kind of give you an overview of our school report card.
So that passes unanimously seven to zero.
Yes.
Thank you. My dad was a math teacher, by the way. Uh, moving on to five point one. Presentation, discussion, and Consider Approval of the School District of Janesville's application to sponsor the WIAA Girls Hockey Co-op Team. So we've gotten a lot of information. I'm sure you've read all the information, scores of emails. We've got feedback from administration, as little extra documents from myself, so we've had lots of information. So I'm gonna go ahead and make a motion. Uh, I'd like to make a motion to have the School District of Janesville apply to become the sponsoring agent for the girls' co-op hockey team currently known as the Rock County Fury, beginning with the twenty-five, twenty-six school year.
So moved.
There's a motion and a, there's so moved and a second?
Give me a second to catch up with this.
Sure.
I didn't get a...
So who's, who's Susan?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Thank you for your patience.
Oh, thank you. So is a motion, a second, discussion, comments, questions? Seeing none, let's vote.
Yeah.
I voted Denise, and it said it was an error.
It's glitching on me a little bit, so I just reopened it.
Okay. Will it populate again?
Oh, here it is.
Okay.
Let's vote.
Okay, and then it's...
And that passes unanimously seven to zero. Commissioner Hayworth and Commissioner Paul are absent. Five point two, Presentation on the State Report Cards.
Okay. Um, I think all of you have the packet available. Hopefully you had a chance to kind of take a look at that. Uh, my goal tonight is to kind of give you an overview of our school report card from the district perspective. We're here tonight to talk a little bit about the successes and the challenges that we've faced with our report card score. We know that this report card is a snapshot in time, and we're not pleased with the results that we have, and we're making plans and have made plans in order to continue to work on improving the outcomes of our kids. Um, I would also say that there are many great things going on. We witnessed many of those tonight that happens within our school district, and so our report card is not a key indicator of the excellence or lack thereof of a school district. And I'm confident that the School District of Janesville has many wonderful things and great things to offer as we continue to kind of purse through our report card and the scores and what it means. So, um, I guess what I would start with is this, the first page on the report card. And so, the report card score meets few expectations. There's five different levels, from fails to meet expectations to significantly exceeds. And each district has a little bit different matrix in how that is initiated. And so, uh, every, um, school district report card has a little bit of a star that the DPI says you're not supposed to compare school district to school district or school to school. And the reason is, is because that circle that you see changes at every single building and every single district. And so, to kind of give you an example of why, um, what those key priority areas are. So if you see, um, in School District of Janesville, the two on the bottom, those twenty-five and twenty-five, are those targeted group outcomes and specifically the on-track for graduation. Those two are the same for every single school district and every school in the state. How it's determined changes a little bit in elementary to secondary, but we're just gonna talk about the district specifically tonight about that. And where the changes happen specifically is on the top. And when you see those achievement and growth scores, those change based on the school district's free and reduced, um, population. So in the School District of Janesville, for example, we have a fifty-eight percent population, a free and reduced. And so what that does is that changes the twenty-five percent that the average would be to nine point, uh, five percent. And if you move, um, that number, the, what happens also is that the, then, the remaining fifty percent of both of them there become growth, and growth then becomes forty point five percent. It is possible in school districts that have little or no free and reduced population, that number would be opposite. So it would be forty, it could go all the way up to forty-five and all the way down the five on either side. The typical number across the state then would be twenty-five, 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 twenty-five. So you can just kind of see how that, um, potentially purses or changes what, what it looks like. To kind of give you an example of where, what that means, the last year, our school district, um, we had thirty-nine point three in that growth and ten point seven in achievement because we had a little bit less, um, in our free and reduced population. So we were closer to fifty-five percent. So as that number grows, the, uh, number on growth shrinks or on, um, on achievement shrinks and growth grows. And I'll talk to you a little bit about why, um, why that matters, but again, each of our schools, you can imagine, have different free and reduced population and different student dynamics. And so that's why that report card score really isn't an indicator to, um, view for comparison. It's really a, a view on how we are doing in specific areas. This is an example, then, as we kind of tune towards, um, some of the areas and, and that we've, uh, were scored. So if you look at the first area in terms of priority area scores and achievement, that score is fifty-four point five is, um, a five point, one, five tenths of one percent. It's higher than it was the year before. But because our percentage of achievement is less than it was the year before, it doesn't really initiate to, uh, growth within our report card score. On the opposite side, we see our growth score at fifty point eight, and we saw that as a decline slightly from the previous years. And we'll talk a little bit about what each of those means. And then you get targeted group and on-track for graduation. All four of those become part of your report card score. And there's interesting factors when you take a look at each one of those. You can see, for example, that our graduation rate is higher than the state. And again, that would be something that we're, uh, proud of and want to continue to look at what, how that happens. But it also shows that our on-track for graduation is below where, where maybe the state average would be. And so then you go, well, how are you judging outcomes? Is it graduation? Is it attendance? Is it the on-track? And so there's a metric that has all of those involved. And so we'll kind of move forward and talk a little bit about, um, each one of those and what that means. So when we look at our achievements, um, the general look at our report card would indicate that we saw really good growths, specifically in math, um, in grades three through five. And we really saw good growth in our elementary schools. And when we say, I should probably pause and remind you that our, our assessments are grades three through eleven. So kindergarten, first and second grade aren't on the report card score in terms of achievement or growth, and neither are seniors. So it goes from that, um, third grade all the way through, uh, eleventh grade for the ACT. We saw some above average, uh, specifically in our English Language Arts in fourth grade. We saw increased growth in our English Language, um, uh, in eighth grade in math, and we saw an increased secondary readiness. And we'll talk a little bit, um, about what those means, what those means. So when you look at, like, how are we doing? Sometimes we, and again, this isn't a perfect, uh, average, but it's like, well, who is like us? And so this is some common school districts, and we think about what school districts are like Janesville in terms of enrollment and size, and we see where we go. And then we see, well, where did we land specifically on our third grade reading? So there's ten school districts there. There are, uh, we're third, for example. And again, these same ten, we'll go through all of these areas. But I want to tell you is that in this model of those ten, there's only three who, uh, don't meet expectations. We're one of those three. So it's not a pure mathematical figure when you say, how are you doing as a district? Because here's one example. Here's another example on our fourth grade math exam, right? Of those ten districts, again, there are only three, um, that are not, but yet we have the highest score in fourth grade math. Keep going through, and we say, well, where do we fall within, um, our eighth grade math, right? So we're talking about reading, math, English Language Arts, right in the middle. And where we'll see the difference, um, in, as we talk about other pieces within our programs, we see that our four-year graduation rates, right? We're at the top of that group or right where we need to be, um, very specifically. And, and as we, um, take a look at what it means to be, um, meets and exceeds expectations, we would want our kids to be able to, uh, say, hey, I've graduated, I met those criteria. So there's some other key indicators. We know that we use a report card that's a one-time, uh, representative of where we get information from. So we also use internal data to try to track and make judgments on how are we doing? We are able to give the STAR, um, three times a year, and that will also helps us to try to determine how well kids are doing and areas that we need to target. And so here's an example of some growth that we saw specifically, uh, in our STAR math. And then the next one would be specifically in our STAR reading. Now, one of the things that we continue to analyze, when we look at our data and the trends that we're seeing within STAR, is that maybe STAR is not giving us quality predictors to what's gonna happen on the forward. And so we're starting to take a look at and get feedback from outside resources about, is STAR really testing what we want it to test? Because over the last few years, we continue to see significant growth in our STAR, and we're not seeing the same growth necessarily on our forward exams. And so we're going, hmm, is this not showing us what we're thinking about or not? So it's not like the STAR doesn't provide quality information. We do a fall test, a mid-year test, and a spring, and we can see growth within students and how they're doing. But what we're, our purpose is, is also to help us drive our practices and instruction. And so, again, ultimately, if we're hoping to, um, achieve, um, excellence and exceed expectations on our report card scores, and they don't align up with our forward exam, we're continuing to take a look at, maybe STAR is, might, might not be, and there's a few others that we're reviewing that might have a better link to making sure that we're getting predictable information from kids as they move forward. So this is a, a scorecard, um, and we use an ACT prep, uh, kind of a model. We've been doing that for two years at our high school. And what we see there, and specifically our goal when we started, was to move, uh, five percentage points in math. And so if you look in the upper right-hand corner, you see there's a fifteen point nine. Uh, that was our math score, um, district-wide, and we saw that in the, uh, spring when we took that assessment, um, we were at sixteen point seven. So we continue to see growth, um, but what we're measuring, um, and what we're also acknowledging is that some of the growth that we're seeing is not as fast as some of our peers. And so when we're measuring, uh, school report card and school report card results specifically for the School District of Janesville, more than forty percent of our, our score is on growth. It's not on achievement. So those, those paces that I showed you before, that said how our students are doing achievement-wise, on our third grade, our fourth grade, our eighth grade math and graduation, well, only nine point five percent of our score is based on achievement. And so as we think about what we're doing, we need to shift a little bit differently in our thinking to make sure that we're identifying targeted growth. And I'll talk to you a little bit about our strategies and how we're doing that in just a minute. But this is, uh, an example of, um, some ACT. And again, this is a second year redoing some of these ACT predictors and being able to, uh, make some quality predictions on how our kids are doing in ninth grade, tenth grade, and then predictably on their ACT, uh, in the eleventh grade. Again, here is some, some ELA, um, just general language and ELA, again, English Language Arts. And if we look at the twenty-three, uh, twenty-two, twenty-three, you see that's the blue. And if you see the orange, that's our district, and you see the twenty-three, twenty-four, that's our state. And so the first thing that we want to do is say we're growing internally. And so if you look at where the blue is compared to, compared to where the orange is in all of those areas, you're seeing positive growth. Now, I would also let you know that there are some cut score changes. So the cut score changes manipulated a bit statewide, not anything we did, how the percentage of kids, um, the percentage of kids were proficient. I can't give you an analytical model. I can tell you that there was a number of educators who sat down on that table over the summer and, and reviewed this cut scores and determined that, um, those cut scores needed to be changed, and they were lowered. Um, and how they got to each number, I can't give you the math on that. I don't think anybody in the state really knows that number. But what I am gonna share with you is that we're seeing trends specifically in our forward grade three, four, and five, that is what we're looking for. When you look at blue to orange and then blue to orange. And in some cases, we're seeing how we're, um, narrowing the gap, all of them, specifically compared to the state, and in, in some cases, we're higher than the state. So again, not that the state is the ultimate metrics for us, the state is for us to be the best we can be, and we want all schools to meet or exceed expectations. That's our goal, but this just kind of gives you a snapshot of that forward exam. This is the math, and so you'll continue to see the same thing. Blue is where we were last year, orange is where we are today, and we're seeing that growth specifically in our, uh, elementary grades. That's targeted, we saw that. Here's our forward grade, here's our forward from sixth through eighth. What you see is the same trends. We're making good growth, but what you also see is we haven't caught up in the middle school to our peers, but we're getting closer. The closest is in eighth grade, you see forty-eight point one to forty-eight point seven. But when you see where we were last year, and I could show you this trend from the year before, we're making growth. But again, we have to make better growth, all kids' growth, and then again, everybody wants their kid to achieve at high levels, and we do too. So that's just an indicator of some things that we have to continue to work on. Here's the forward exam, uh, for math in sixth through eighth. And again, you're seeing the same tiers where we started to where we are. We're growing in each one of those areas, and we're narrowing the gap from where we were to where we are in comparison of the state. But we also know that our biggest challenge this year was, um, the students' performance, specifically from grades five to six. And so we saw targeted, um, deficiencies from our overall scores, from students who left in fifth grade and what they scored in sixth grade. So again, we have strategies involved to work hard on making sure we're identifying the supports we have. That's a trend statewide, but our trend was greater, and we want to make sure we're making, uh, adjustments, uh, in our teaching, um, and our students' learning and opportunities specifically in grades five to six. Uh, that was one of the areas that we saw, uh, trends. So, um, I'm gonna go through the end, and then I'll go back and answer any questions you have. Um, another portion of the state report card specifically talks about district attendance. So we track attendance, uh, on a monthly basis, and what we're seeing, um, again, from our district is, uh, an increase, um, in the number of students who are participating and a decrease in the number of students who are, are chronically absent. So again, a reminder in a chronic absenteeism is students who miss ten percent of the days or more for any reason. Ten percent of the days or more. So you're talking about seventeen-ish days that students miss. And, uh, what we're seeing, um, again, not that, uh, we're growing there, reducing, I guess is what we have, we still have twenty-two percent of our students who are missing, um, ten percent of the school year. That's seventeen days. And when I think about, you know, well, what would be norm and what does that look like? And, you know, if I said our employees get about ten, they get ten sick days per year, that's a kind of a norm. That's on a two-hundred-and-sixty day. We have a hundred-and-seventy-three day school calendar. So that's a, that's about a day, let's say seventeen, over the course of a year. That's two days a month, right? Nine months, eighteen days. But it adds up. And so what we want to continue to do is, is, uh, share with people about the importance of coming to school every day, the importance, um, that that does in helping not only you build positive habits that will be lifelong learning, but also, uh, allow you to learn, uh, at a higher level. If you think about that, if I miss seventeen days over the course of ten years, right? You think about what that happens, a hundred-and-seventy school days, that's one whole year of absence. And you can't make that up. It's just, just something that needs to be there. But we're seeing, again, uh, positive growth. One thing to, uh, remind you of is that attendance, um, it lags a year. So this year's report card attendance was last year's attendance, and next year's report card attendance was the previous. So the numbers you see on here, ninety-one point four, ninety, um, and twenty-two point five will be on next year's report card, whereas ninety point four and ninety-one. And we're on track, I shared with the board a little bit earlier, we're on track to be, uh, have higher attendance this year than we did the previous year. And I think our, our, our staff and our parents and community, um, is embracing, we need to make sure that kids are learning and getting to school. So that's, uh, um, another piece. So there's a couple of other areas, and we say, um, increases on the state report card. You know, there are areas of which aren't measured, um, on your report card, but they definitely are indicators of success. And so one of those areas talks about, um, the students successfully completed advanced placement, um, uh, tests, and I just want to make sure I, I get to my space here. So when we look at that post-secondary readiness, um, we were, we moved, um, again, last year from twenty-three students to seventy-five students completing, uh, work-based learning. And when we talked about what that looks like from our district, remember, we were working hard on what the career opportunities, and we want to continue to grow that. We are a hundred-and-sixty students, uh, from seventy-two, uh, that received industrial credits. And so we know that we want to continue to provide students career and college opportunities, and so we're seeing that increase specifically in that. And then we also see that we have, um, one thousand, nearly fifteen hundred students who are participating in, uh, dual enrollment classes. Again, another positive. There's another metric that the report card shares, that metrics talks about, um, the attendance in arts. And our attendance in arts, specifically in music, theater, and art, exceeds the state average in every single area. So they're saying our students are participating and doing the things that we expect them to do in art, but that is, again, not anything that's measured on a report card. They just put it out there. Now, they could choose to because they have the state average and a percentage, but it's not part of, um, the report card, uh, internally. So when I talk about our, um, our areas of improvement and what are some specific things that we need to do, um, in order to, um, improve outcomes for kids. So when I talk to you about our target area or our growth, uh, that targeted area groups are students who are in the, um, uh, bottom quartile of, uh, our student achievement. And that, those students in the bottom quartile, um, our growth over the last couple of years has not been good. It's lacked, um, uh, the state average. And in our school report card recording mechanism, you see that that's more than forty percent of our, um, score on a report card is that growth. And so we've really focused on trying to, um, improve outcomes for all kids, but then focusing, we talk about knowing, knowing those students, um, by name. We have to name the kids and under- We have to name the kids and understand who's not making it and what can we do in order to make sure that we're helping them grow. We're not saying that they need to be AP scholars. What we're saying is they need to grow from where they are today and exceed where they should be at the end. Not if I'm in first grade and I have kindergarten reading level, it's not that I'm moving you to second grade. It's how about we move you to first and a half, right? And that's the growth that we need to continue to look through. And again, I would tell you that all of our students are growing. We see that at our secondary levels, specifically in our high schools for ATC, ACT scores. But they're not growing as fast as they should. At some point, students are going to grow based on life experience, right? We call that osmosis, right? Come to school every day. And then there's another level of because we're teaching and and hopefully the students are learning, that there's a growth for students as well. What we're talking about is making sure we're more focused on students who need to make, who need to grow in addition to students who are AP scholars. So the next steps, we talk about those resource allocations. We brought in some support specifically from Learning Tree. And we're what, we're talking about multi-levels of systems of support, MLSS. That's a tool that we're using to really dig down into the students who are not meeting success and trying to identify very specifically what we need to do to make sure they're growing. In some cases, those students have IEPs or 504s or need some, have already been identified as in supports. But what we're actually finding is a lot of times, those are kids that are with us every day and we're just not making it with them. And so we're making some changes to make sure we're naming and identifying those kids to help support them and their achievement. So we talked a little bit about those strategic actions. You've heard about bridges and wonders. And we've seen good gains throughout our system. And we're hopeful that we're handing that off as we look at some changes we made in our middle school systems as well in order to target students' learning. We, again, targeted those support for key transitions. We talked about on our, Mr. Garner talked specifically about what our goals will be for the future, specifically when we're talking about staffing. And again, trying to identify some smaller class size specifically in grades six, nine, K one, two in those transition years. And we saw some needs specifically in our districts and really loud needs in five, six. So we're working on trying to improve that. We also continue to look at our metrics and making sure that we're having key metrics for each one of those tools. Again, I talked to you a little bit about that STAR data. And as we look at the STAR data metrics, those are three tests that we can look at on a regular basis. We have longevity with them. But we're really not sure that that is making. So we're getting some outside feedback on what might other school districts be using that are having quality success? And is there an avenue that we want to take a look at that? Okay, so I'll pause there. That was a lot of talking in ten minutes. But I will see if there's any questions you have or something you want me to speak larger to or be more in-depth specifically on.
Thanks. Thanks very much. I have a question about the last slide, the strategic action steps, resource allocation to secondary levels. What specifically does that involve?
So I think I can speak to a little bit. And I think I could maybe put Dr. Gra, I think Dr. Bian's in here. I could put her on a spot. But so a couple of things that's happening. One, as we look at the, using the tests that we have specifically to do some pre-ACT and digging into that data, that's a tool that we've paid for in order to help our students measure the success that we've had. So that's A. We also, I mentioned, we've, each school has a leadership team that has met with Solution Tree first as a large group and then second as a small group to specifically identify strategies that they're doing in their building with a coach to help support the improvement of outcomes for kids who are in that twenty-fifth percent quartile. I'll look over and say, I miss anything or anything else that we would say. I think in addition to that, we're also looking at our systems. And we don't have any recommendations yet about potential changes within the staffing. But we're looking currently at our systems, like what are we doing to help support, what's in place, and what might we change in the future? But we're not ready to make any board recommendations at this time.
Thank you.
My question is, as we go back to the overall score and the priority area weight and as we look at that, excuse me. So as you described the breakout between the achievement and the growth, and I appreciate the level of, on detail, you've shared that. It's probably the best I've heard since we've been here. So then it becomes, so what is our predicted? How I want to say this. So was the overall score a surprise? Because from this, and now, of course, the analytical side of me says, we know our level that of poverty we would have. So we would all, should know the breakdown in percentage of growth and achievement and who falls in, the students that fall into the fourth quartile. So all of the calculations we could just about do before we see them are maybe, I'm picturing, like, ongoing. We know what the score looks like, maybe not today, but tomorrow, because that's what we're looking at. Is that part of what we are doing or will be doing?
So I would say that if I could go back a few years and kind of help maybe build some background to answer your question. So two years ago, our goals were to reduce the number of kids in ninth grade who were failing algebra and increase our reading and math students by three percent, if you remember those numbers. And we did that, remember, we we did that. But then we realized that it didn't move the needle specifically in student achievement because the three percent on our own internal data didn't measure with that. So then we shifted and we said we wanted to use our forward data and three percent growth. Well, remember, then they changed the report card score. So we did grow by three percent. But it ended up being maybe not a quality measure. So the third time, right, my third try here is, all schools will meet or exceed expectations. So now we know that in order for us to meet expectations, we're going to need need to move the needle greater in growth than we have in the in the past. And we've, I think we did the right work. We were working on achievement. Achievement for students matters, and we want to continue to do that. But we also have to be cognizant of where that report card needle moves a little bit. And so now we're a little bit more focused on growth, maybe more purposely focused on growth and that targeted group that we have. And each building has goals. And they've identified specifically who the students are in there and how we're going to have a strategy in moving those students forward greater than we've done before. We're not going to close the window. I think the reality is this is a three-year average. And so there's part of that. So the answer to your question is a surprise. So one of the things that we never really know in growth is it's growth based on the anticipated growth of a student who is like that in the state. And so we don't know what the anticipated is. Like, we were, eh, I'm not really comfortable. We get, so example, we get the forward test data back in the summer. We don't get a report card score. We get the test data. So then we can look through where we are and what we, where we see. But then after we got the data, we heard that the cut scores changed. So then we didn't know if our, because the first thing we, everybody saw, we all agree like, oh, man, we just, we just nailed it. We are really doing a good job. This, we met every single one of our goals, three percent or greater. Well, then, well, we changed the cut scores, which means everybody's cut. And then we didn't know where everybody else was, right? You just didn't know where everybody else was. So growth really is a measure that we don't know, specifically because it's based on what the state anticipates growth for a student who is like that. We do know that we, we do know how to track our own student growth and we can predict, and now we're trying to do that, on what it likely would look like. And so when we have, you know, again, twenty-five percent of our population. So you can fill in the blank. If we have seven thousand kids between grades three and eleven, twenty-five percent of those students are in that targeted group and need to grow faster than they have been growing. We know that. We've identified that. And that, I'm confident you're going to see that growth increase. What will, you know, I'll give you an example. The school in our district that has had the greatest success in growth, Jackson Elementary School. How has Jackson Elementary School's school report card scores been? Significantly exceeds or exceed, right? I mean, they, and part of that is they've been doing a great job. There's other schools who have that. But that's measurement because their poverty level is at eighty percent. And so then their measurement is growth, right? So, I mean, we have a blue ribbon school who has some of the highest achievement in the state. But they also have above fifty percent free and reduced. So their achievement score, right, is like twelve or fourteen. And their growth, so it's not about just achievement, it's about growth. So I should, yes, we have a better idea of how to make some predictions on that. And we're working hard on trying to, on trying to do that.
Thank you. And so then my one comment, and I appreciate that and I understood that even better, is it would seem like if we're, if we're naming the lower quartile, what's best for them then becomes best for the whole population? So then by sort of the osmosis you mentioned, if our practices are focused on the lower quarter, then if what we're doing there should affect everybody and be positive. But at least that's what I would see, or at least some of the strategic practices or action steps. And it wasn't just quite, I didn't see it quite that way, but thank you.
Yeah, I just reiterate, we're not just identifying that twenty-fifth percentile. We're just naming and making sure we identify so that if we're saying, we're, I think what we're hoping to try to do is transition into a learning instead of teaching. And so in the model of I have a common formative assessment and the students take that and then all of a sudden forty percent of my kids pass, I can't just move on and say, too bad, we have to, so we're strategizing on what does that look like? And that's hard, right? When do I have time to do that? Do I pull them out? What does it look like? We've, we've done a better job in our elementary schools. We've got a middle school model that changes. So we can identify that a little bit. And we're really working hard on trying to look at our big systems at the high school level. But the answer is yes. Quality, we call it tier-one instruction, really improves all learners. And so that's, that again, probably ultimately is the focus.
I'll go with the so moved.
There's a motion in a second. Motion is to approve the resolution authorizing issuance of awarding of the sale of a $12,000, $5,000, $10,000 on anticipation of the swap.
Evidently a well-written memo, so thank you. There we go. Very good. Thank you.
Unanimously, thank you very much. Five point four, update on long-range facilities plan.
Thank you. Just wanted, again, make sure I'm providing some general information to the board and to our public a little bit about our long-range plan. Again, I can never thank the community enough for the support of this one-hundred-and-fifty-one point eight million dollar ask. As I have meetings with Dan and our core team, I sometimes have some sweat that goes down my back in terms of the amount of actual work that is going to need to be done in the next years to come. When I, I think when we think a little bit about the twenty million dollars worth of work that we did for our secured entrances and you multiply that by a lot, right? We do, you can do the math with that, but fifteen, maybe seven and a half. But it is something that we're working hard on making sure we're creating a quality plan. So what that looks like when we start about that is just conceptual. And so right now, we're at that phase on this high level determining specifically what's going to be remodeled and where we're going to do that and, and again, allocating funds specifically to address those. Then we have this schematic portion where the district will collaborate with these architects to refine that specific space and what we're looking at and develop the more detailed designs and plans, specifically either mechanical or floor plan, to share. And then from, from there, those schematic are made. And then we need to get some bids specifically from our public and get that information back so that we can start the process of construction. So we're working on that. And the reason I share that a little bit with you is because we have nineteen facilities that are going to get work. And so we have to have a process and a structure on how to move forward with the accomplishment of the work. And have I reiterated to our principals, and I think I've mentioned to the board, we will not have nineteen job sites going on at once. We likely will have three job sites or four job sites, meaning three or four buildings being worked on at a time. And then as that building's worked, the next construction, the schematic, the design will happen for the second group. And then we keep moving through with the idea of of potentially having these core groups. If we said it's going to be over the course of three or four years. If we have eighteen, and if we divide three by eighteen, you can see that there's maybe six per year that kind of gets through the work. And that's the process that we hope to establish. So Dan and I and the core team are working hard with EUA and JP Cullen specifically on the planning and and progress for that. They'll report a little bit out at the Buildings and Grounds Committee meeting coming up next week. And then we'll have EUA and JP Cullen, along with our core team, speak to the board at the January meeting, really outline, for you, what buildings are going to start, when they're going to start, and how that process looks through for the next four years. And again, much like plans laid out, if you're building something or doing a remodel, once you set those plans in motion, there's, you can always stop them, but it will cost you, right? So we're trying to do it as efficiently as we can. So, you know, it makes sense. And sometimes, you know, I mentioned before, we have some buildings in the elementary level that look very similar. So it's likely those buildings are going to go at the same time. We also have other buildings that are on maybe one side of the town or the other side of the town. It probably makes some sense to try to do some things together and make that happen. So we will, we are continuing to meet. There'll be an update at the Buildings and Grounds. So if you're excited, you can either watch or come to the Buildings and Grounds meeting next week.
Tuesday.
Tuesday. And then at the January board meeting, we'll have a formal presentation with those partners to be able to give us a detailed plan on when the work will begin, what buildings we'll start with and follow up with, how the work will look over the course of the years to come.
Thank you. Anybody? Questions or comments?
Move on to the Personnel Policy and Curriculum Committee meeting. Who's filling in? Thanks, Kathy.
Thanks. I'm, I'm filling in for Commissioner Paul tonight, who couldn't be here. And I am happy to provide you with an update from PPC. But I also want to remind you that you can watch our meeting online. We are riveting. Yes, we learned about, in our meeting, we learned about change from standards-based to letter grading at the middle schools, moving to a ninety-eighty, seventy-sixty letter grading scale. And, and also some changes about late work and missing work and that we think will be, provide our families and our students with more and more clarity and better information. More emphasis will be placed on formative practices and meeting due dates. So missing assignments will be more easily identified. The system will be more easily understood by families. And students will be better prepared for high school expectations through their exposure to letter grades earlier. There are positive reports. This is already being implemented. There are positive reports about an increase in accountability and more awareness regarding student work already. And after just a few months, working with this new system. At the high school level, uh, we learned about changes that will focus on creating some good habits in students by firming up due dates and rules about retakes. Uh, work continues at the high school level to create a more consistent practice within each department and across the schools. Uh, we heard also from the Benefits Committee, um, and our Benefits Department, and, uh, heard a report from the Benefits Advisory Committee, which, um, is a committee made up of ten staff members, um, from all of our employee groups and one board member, thank you Commissioner Millard. Um, it met in October and discussed the performance of, uh, Dean and Mercy uh, in terms of, uh, enrollment premiums, out-of-pocket costs for employees, and the medical loss ratios of both. Uh, more emphasis will be placed on wellness. Um, and, uh, the next meeting topic will be a budget explanation uh, and an overview of how final decisions are made. Upcoming committee meetings are January eighth, March nineteenth, and April twenty-third. Uh, the Benefits Department is also reviewing, um, RFPs from insurance brokers. Uh, we should have a decision coming soon. Uh, and, uh, the district has discussed, uh, well, we, we have, um, in terms of, uh, the last thing that the Benefits, uh, uh, Department talked with us about, um, it, it was regarding retirements. Remember, we've talked about, um, the potential for a hundred and thirty retirements at the end of this year. Uh, so far, Benefits has met with forty potential retirees, and at the moment, we are at eight confirmed retirements. Um, so staff benefit trainings are continuing, and January's focus will be on stress management.
Thank you very much for filling in. Any questions for Kathy? Anyone? I can't wait to hear this report. This Building and Grounds Committee.
Well, first I'll start with the safety message that Mr. Millard shared. It's best to return items to their rightful place so you don't trip over them. Now, it would have been good had I paid attention, implemented that. Little different, I did not move anything, but the environment that I was in changed, and I didn't know it changed. So I went by the assumption that I had a clear path, and I no longer had a clear path. And I tripped over something, and I ended up hitting the wall. And that is why it looked like this. It looks worse than it is, it was just a top layer that was really knocked off, but it was appropriate for the safety message that we had and what ended up happening, so. Thank you, Jim, and hopefully I'll, it, it's really, but I guess probably in the bigger sense of, I traveled quite a bit over Thanksgiving, and one of the things is if we're often traveling long distances, the weather around us could be pretty good, we may look at our destination. And that might be fine, but in between, the weather could be rather nasty. And I had an opportunity to do that between here in Maryland and around Pittsburgh last Wednesday night. The weather was bad, and I saw that and stopped in Columbus and spent the night. So it is not just what is happening right in front of you and what you expect to happen, but pay attention to the potential changes of environment and exactly what those changes may be, so. Physical sense, but also driving. Um, continuing on with our, let's see, Kathy went with riveting. I'll just say ours was informative, um, meeting, which they always are. And one of the quick reasons why I, for the, the band, just say, let's, let's move past that quickly, 'cause we were really, I mean, we spent probably forty-five minutes talking about it in great detail to understand what the financing mechanism is and really why it's important. Um, if we look back to the twenty-twenty referendum and the amount of dollars the community graciously approved and the interest rate, taking that amount of money, we weren't gonna get into any IRS issues. But if we went out and we had a, got a great rate, totally for the, the current level that the community approved, we could actually be making too much money from having it sit and we're not spending it. So it's gonna be maybe several draws, but one of the key piece, and thank you for Barrett able to say, hey, before you guys do anything, here's something that keeps you potentially out of some of those situations. So really, that's what that was. Um, but as I said, it got really detailed there. Um, I think Superintendent Holsman went over the, the master planning, um, long-range piece. Um, probably the, the key piece, and as Mark said, is really bite-sized chunks of work that make sense. So that's really what EUA and Cullen is working through and the internal team. So, uh, that will be riveting next Tuesday to hear what that plan looks like, um, as we break that down into the various phases. Um, I didn't mention the twenty-twenty referendum? We're not done yet? We're not done yet. We still are finishing up projects from that, and also ESER. So when I say we're not done yet, one of the little pieces that I'm familiar with, and, and the, the supply chain is still dealing with, a switchgear for Franklin is still needed. Um, the lead time for many of those devices in the industry has been, I think now it's about two and a half years. So if we need a switchgear for any of the, the new work that's coming up, they might be placing those orders pretty soon. So that's one of those things. You might not see anything happen in phase three, but we may be ordering stuff just because we have to get it in the supply chain hopper to get going, so. Um, when I said we're not done yet, the switchgear is one of those. Um, building up, uh, uh, automation systems for the buildings are being implemented. Um, so that's one of the really important things that is happening. And the important piece of that is we think of a lot of the managing the building envelope from a heating and cooling standpoint. Right now, we're kind of blind on what the buildings look like. We don't know those cold points or those hot points. We know when we're there, but there's not a system that says we need to do something there. So, um, Mr. Leader and his team will have that readily available so they can make adjustments for that environment to help the students and staff be more comfortable in that overall learning piece. Excellent, uh, presentation of student nutrition. And the presentation was not driven by the, I'll say, the incident or the situation that we all were sure it happened at Craig. Um, but what we end up with is student nutrition, the amount of, you know, work that they do. So Liz Lido provided just an update of numerically the meals served. Breakfast, over six hundred and fifty thousand, almost nine hundred thousand lunches, and sixty-five hundred staff meals. So we look at in total the amount of work that goes into providing the students and staff, um, the, the nutrition throughout the day. It is significant. But then, as we look at the significance, um, the DPI says, you know what? We're gonna do an annual review of every district everywhere. Maybe it varies by district, but this particular year, they're doing an annual review, um, of Jamesville currently right now. Um, so I look forward to seeing what the outcome from the DPI perspective of what, what are we doing well? What do we need to address, um, to be even better? Some of the other items that actually have taken place, you know, we always hear about the compensation, and it's not this, it's not that. Well, one of the things that was done, um, over last year is in a compensation analysis and adjustments for staff. So we're not where we need to be, we know that. But we're better than we used to be, and we're continuing to look to, Liz Lido and her team will continue to look to what changes needs to be made to overall get what we need, um, from a staff support to provide, um, our students with the best possible meal situations. I think the next item is, we look forward to our next meeting, and we mentioned it's next Tuesday. Yes, we'll have the capital planning items. And one of the more impactful items is the budget assumptions. You know, that's the starting point of when we start to develop the budget is what assumptions are we working with? What do we think the, the state, which, you know, we know that's gonna be interesting to see what comes out, but what do we start planning for before we know what comes out? So that'll be part of that discussion. So if you want to come and enjoy two, three, four hours of a meeting, please come next Tuesday. Thank you.
Thanks.
As Greg alluded to, the Finance, Buildings and Grounds Committee will be meeting on Tuesday, December seventeenth, starting at three PM here at the ESC. That will allow for a four-hour meeting. Our PPC committee will meet on Monday, January sixth, at four-thirty here at the ESC. And the next Board of Education meeting will be on Tuesday, January fourteenth, at six PM, also here at the ESC. Not yet, we'll discuss that at our next board agenda setting.
Okay, thank you.